You want one? Okay, it's 6:35 tonight. We're going to call the meeting of the Webster Planning Board to order. First order of business is approval of the meeting minutes from April 25 and May 23.
Both set meeting minutes have been vetted by both Kathy and Chuck and staff, and no additional edits to make. They were minor.
Right. I got a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the April and May minutes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve both.
A second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signature forms are already done, right?
Yep. You should take an official vote, however, to sign and submit that.
I need a motion to request staff to submit the form that everybody just signed?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointments to the Mass -- Central Mass Regional Planning. Is everybody on board? It was Cristella and?
Yeah, this is annual appointment of Cristella and Kathy to pick your requests.
Are you both willing to stay on?
Stay there.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I'll make a motion that they both -- they're both volunteered to stay on as the Central Mass Planning Commission delegates. Thank you both.
Thank you, Shoretty.
I need a second.
All in favor?
A second, yes. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you both very much. We're breezing right through this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you've spoken to the town moderator, but this request for you to appoint someone to the bylaw committee had come in. It is your choice of appointment, but the bylaw requires a member of the planning board to serve on that bylaw review committee.
Okay. So we'd be asking for a volunteer to do such. I don't know if anybody has time for that.
Ian, what's involved and how often do they meet?
That's a great question. Well, my guess is that they meet in advance of town meeting to make recommendations on any bylaw changes. And if there are no bylaw changes, then there are no meetings. If there are bylaw changes, you would -- you'd be meeting. So it's around the town meeting timeframe. And they hold hearings and they make recommendation.
Okay. I would guess it's three or four times a year.
That would be.
I'm just guessing. If anybody has time for that?
Yeah, I'll go with you.
Wow. Mr. Easy timeline.
I guess.
Awesome. Okay. We need a vote for that?
No. You can appoint.
Then Mike is appointed. Thank you very much, Mike.
You're welcome.
That was awesome.
Then we're going to do Jason since he was here.
Yeah, we could have done that. He's already -- he's probably already on it from the other board. Where are we?
Same time of year for.
Reorganization. Is it -- who are we missing?
Your two associate members did let us know that they were not going to be here today. They'll be able to participate in the hearings by way of the Mullen certification.
Okay.
Later, but your reorganization involves the five of you. They are not affiliated with that.
Okay. So we need to reorganize. If anybody wants to volunteer to be chairman, please do so.
I really -- my current thing expires next year, so I won't be seeking reappointment after next year, so if somebody wants to.
Actually, that's because you just got reappointed to 2025.
I saw that, Paul.
Who said?
What a slutman. Well, your term was up this year, so anybody who's.
Well, it's next year.
No.
Okay.
We can double check.
All right. I don't mind doing it for another year, but after that.
We'll step up there, right?
Yeah, because I'm pretty well done, but as you know, I haven't been that reliable recently anyway, but.
Oh, you've been doing a great job.
I don't mind continuing to do it, so.
Thank you.
Mike, you'll stay on as.
If you guys want me to.
Play chair or somebody, and we'll do that. We'll leave it the way it is.
Mr. Easy on that as well.
Mr. Easy. Okay. You'll remain as the agent or what's the term?
Clerk.
Clerk.
Clerk, yeah. Dan.
So myself, Mike, Dan, Ms. Clerk, I need a motion to leave everyone as they are.
Second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next, Mrs. Shoretty. Ian?
Yes, this is for -- do we not have anything here on the bond? No, there is nothing here. There are two items tonight that involve Pine Wood Estates. Just that section of Oakwood Drive. Today was -- the bond is for now. You were going to take action on the bond, but we still haven't heard back from the engineer, and I'll let Chuck explain his last correspondence with him.
Sure. So in going back and forth with the design engineer, basically what was submitted was a paving quote?
Oh, the engineer is here.
So, do you want me to keep going?
No.
Okay.
So you have somebody here, the engineer, who's here to explain, but we do need whatever that is in writing.
All right. You want to step forward and just?
Sheriff, first time out here.
Sit there, push the button, make the microphone green.
Yep.
And then tell us who you are and. There you go.
My name is Sheriff Avery. I'm from Topper Land Surveying. It's sort of a summit engineering also involved in there. Currently, I have my civil engineer. I've pushed off the bonding to him. He has not gotten back to me today, so I am hoping that this doesn't hold up the, you know, some approval process. I'm hoping to get this information in, if I can, later on this week, possibly Wednesday, maybe email it to you or so.
Okay. Chuck, you want to finish or?
Sure. Essentially, the information we have right now is.
You might want to pull the mic closer too, because sorry.
They have the -- they submitted a quote for the rest of the pavement, but there's other -- there's other public infrastructure that needs to be finished, like the stormwater and things like that. So that needs to be included in those costs to be able to develop the entire bond cost.
Okay. And we don't have any -- we don't have that yet.
Yeah, that's going to be coming up in the later presentation with the definitive subdivision modification to that.
Okay. Do you have the additional data or?
I don't have the additional data with me right now, but like I said, it is with the civil engineer.
Okay. Ian?
You do officially have to vote on an amount that we do need to forward to the insurance company that's going to issue the bond, so until we have something informal writing for you to see and vote upon, which would happen at the July meeting, it sounds like we're really close, but you can't take action on this tonight.
You don't have any of the data?
I'm sorry. I really don't.
Okay.
We can just put it on the next agenda.
Okay. Where are the numbers? I mean, I'm just curious. Where are they now, Chuck? What their estimates? Do you remember or do you?
For some reason, $40,000 sticks in my head for the paving, but that does not seem right.
You don't?
Unfortunately, it's with my civil engineer.
Yeah, okay. So this is -- these are the two items?
This is the one item for Pine Wood Estates, and later on, you have a public hearing to modify the subdivision plan so they can get that filed with the register.
Okay. And do we have all the data for that one?
Yes.
Can we do that now while he's here?
So you'll have to open the hearing and have Dan read the notice, public hearing notice.
Dan, you're up.
The second one?
The one marks -- or here it is on the screen as well, the first.
There you go.
The first paragraph.
Oh, I got it. It's the first one. All right. Same one. All right. In accordance with the provisions of Section 2 dot B dot 13 of the Webster Subdivision Rules and Regulations of the Webster Planning Board, will hold a public hearing on application for a modified definitive subdivision plan for the Pine Wood Estates 2, a portion of Oakwood Drive, accessory ID 96 dash A dash 3 dash 0, submitted by the Shoretty Living Trust, Joyce E. Shoretty, trustee applicant owner. Said site is located on an agricultural, single-family residential zoning district. The public hearing will be held June 27th at the Selectment Meeting Room, second floor of the Webster Town Hall, 350 Main Street, Webster, Mass. Anyone interested or wishing to be urged to appear at the time and place designated.
Thank you. Okay, Ian, where are we here?
The material that's submitted is in accordance with the regulations. They have requested some waivers. When it comes time for decision, you'll have to consider each one of these. The most critical one that has been sort of the biggest hang-up on this is the length of dead end street. And as all -- we all know that originally this was supposed to connect to Camille. We've seen over the past couple decades that there doesn't seem to be any movement to make that happen. So in order for this modification to go forward and to be filed, that is one of the waivers that will be requested. So here are a handful of them. Not unusual. This is a pretty sort of standard list of waivers, and some of them have already been addressed in the past through the development of the first half of the subdivision. So this -- there's nothing in this waiver list that is extraordinary or outstanding.
Are we actually allowed to issue the waiver on the length of the road?
Mm-hmm.
We are?
Yep. There are your regs. So here's the plan set, and I'll go to whatever page that this will look familiar for a lot of people who are very confused. Well, that's what's out there now. That was agreed as a temporary solution, but that was never officially adopted or approved by the board. So now this process is looking to make what's out there official. There were no objections from the fire department or police department in terms of emergency access, and I guess I can put that there or maybe there. That's a pretty one. And I guess it's up to the applicant to speak to it, and Chuck can give his review.
If I may speak for the Joyce Shoretty, which is the trustee. Basically, I just want to echo that this project's been in the process for some time, during which time, I guess there was some problems with the plans and bringing them together. My purpose, once again, to echo this is to make everything right. The plans that you see up here are existing conditions. As a surveying company presenting, we have to show the existing conditions. The bonding on the lower -- on the three end lots on the lower part of that is exactly the same design as what was given back in 2003 -- oh, I'm sorry, on the 2003 plans by Parra Land Surveying. We're not doing anything different with this. We're just continuing on with his design here. There has been some changes with the wetland setback since which time, but there's already a permit in place, I guess, to do this, so they didn't really want to kind of, let's say, rock the boat too, too much and go through with a whole new application and whatnot. That's why we're doing a modification to a subdivision plan, basically modifying Parra's subdivision plan. Once again, there is a list of waivers that we asked for. It was just the fact that everything's been put in place, built already, you know, such as the length of road with the dead end, where we have sidewalks, you know. Once again, it's pretty much standard, lieu of open space. I'm just quickly going through here, but what this plan is actually showing is purely that. It's the 2003 plan just modified for 2022, so.
Chuck?
Sure. So not to repeat what you just said, this is the same plan that was previously reviewed by the board and also had an engineering review with it. I can go into more detail about how we got to this point here as far as the design, but essentially.
I think everybody knows it by now, right?
Right. It's no longer connecting to Camille, so this was -- this design was put together to settle that, so it does include stormwater and the changes in pavement. The road width was reduced. You know, the cul-de-sac was added. Basically, everything that was temporary was updated to make it permanent. So this is -- these are the same plans that we looked at the last time.
Okay.
But the good news is that they do have a valid order of conditions, and it's good for another two years, so they will not have to go back to conservation for this.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions regarding this plan? I know we've all seen it 100 times now, but.
I'm all set.
But he's good. What do we need for action, Ian?
If there's no one else who wants to speak to it, you need to close the hearing and have me draft a decision.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this issue? No? Okay. Then I'll request a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now I'll be looking. What are we doing for a decision?
The decision will be before you at your next meeting. Just like any other decision, you have to go through that process.
Okay.
Hopefully, by then, I'll have the -- all the bonding information.
You should have that this week?
I guess I should have it this week.
Okay. Yeah, because we want to make sure we have enough time to review it, so it don't get stuck again, you know?
Yep.
I'm sure Mrs. Shoretty is sick of coming here to see us, but.
Yes. Okay.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to come up and actually.
So my mother can't hear anything, which is very unfortunate, so it's kind of muffled. So I think she's going to have a stroke, quite honestly. We came here thinking that. Everything was set. The hoops she has had to jump through, the money she spent, the time, the phone calls back and forth, and I tell her mom, "Stop bugging people. They know," but nobody calls her back. She's been on with engineering. We have not met this gentleman. Someone else did it. Everything was supposed to be set. I don't know what happened, and so now we have to wait another month for maybe them to have it done when it was supposed to have been done. So I -- we're pretty much beside ourselves at this point. We could have just -- and, you know, but my mother chose to do the right thing, chose to take this on herself, and I just -- she told me what she was going to say in the car, but she's like, "I can't go up there and say it." So I don't know if they get it this week. Is there any way that anything can kind of get pushed forward? Because now the road that was supposed to be done and in place, now that can't go in. Now he has another job. Now he can't get -- so it's one thing after the other that is delayed, 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 delayed.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that they didn't get their stuff done on time. Ian?
Unless you want to schedule another meeting for July, but you'll have to run that on your own. I'm going to be gone for two weeks, so.
Oh, that's right. You're gone for the first two weeks. You know, we'd like to do it quicker. I don't know that we can. I mean, unfortunately, I mean, if they had the stuff here, we were ready to approve it.
So we're waiting for the figure now. They were supposed to have had that done.
It was put in my engineer's stands last week.
I just want to say one thing. I'm not good at this.
Take your time, Mrs. Shoretty. We're fine.
I've been working on this since Ann told me about getting this performance on. I've been working on this. I had no idea what a bond was, where to go, so I finally found out. This company, Eastern States Insurance, and for two months now, I've been going back and forth, sending her estimates about the road, the drainage, the everything. So I thought all these estimates were in place. She's been in contact with Ann Morgan, back and forth, and then all of a sudden, Friday, I get a call from Topper Engineering saying they need the estimate on the road and the this, and I'm like, for two months, I've been sending these written estimates to these companies, and now all of a sudden, they don't have the estimates.
I understand.
And I thought they were going to approve this so that I could go forward. I mean, Dean Mason was going to do the road this month. Wazinski was going to do the excavation. And now, all of a sudden, I'm held up. I can't sell the land because they won't release the lot to make the money to pay for this.
Right. I understand, and I feel bad that we can't do it tonight, but unfortunately, we can't. Our hands are tied because unfortunately, not pointing fingers, but they didn't do their job, so.
What are they actually waiting for now? An estimate of what?
We need the total cost so that we can make sure that the bond is adequately -- the amount of the bond is adequate, so that's what we need to do.
Because of all the estimates I sent this insurance company, it came up to like $154,000.
That makes more sense than 40.
But I'm sorry, I couldn't.
She said all of her estimates came up to $154,000, so that's what the remaining were. Does that make sense to you?
That was the engineering, Dean Mason's $50,000. The drainage was $64,000.
I know you can't call it.
I didn't -- all I received was the paving estimate and an engineering estimate. And there was no -- and they were literally the estimates. There was no itemization of what was left to be done and all that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
Like you see on a typical bond estimate.
What's that?
Like you would see on a typical bond estimate.
Right. Yeah, you didn't have that breakdown. I understand.
So is the only thing you're waiting for?
Yeah, and I don't think -- I mean, we don't have enough information to make -- to say that 154 is adequate or 200 is -- I mean, even if you said 200, I mean, we don't know what.
Right, and that's one of the issues, is that, you know, the stormwater was started, and then everything grew back.
Right.
And there's no way for town staff to know what's been completed and what hasn't been completed, so that's when the surveyors and engineers go out, look at what they've got, and say, "Okay, this is what we need to finish, and this is the cost to finish that."
Right. And you need to agree with them. So again, I apologize. I mean, unfortunately, our hands are tied, and as soon as you got to stay on them to get this stuff done so that we can make sure that we can get it done as soon as possible, but we -- I can't see us getting a meeting. I mean, even at the best scenario, it's only going to be a week earlier than what a regular meeting is, so it's not going to help you. So unfortunately.
July meeting?
Yeah, this is July meeting. What's the date of the meeting?
The 25th.
So, I mean, at that point, you'll already have the estimate, so you can go ahead and get the bond, and we could have -- I mean.
It's just a formality.
It's really just a formality at that point unless they really screw it up and Chuck finds fault with it, but I'm assuming that since they've let you down this time, they'll be sure to do it right when they give it to you, so.
So in moving forward, once we have that piece?
Yep.
How do we know now that we can get the bond? How does everything get? How do we know that? Like, how do we find out?
Well, they're going to give you the estimate so that you can write up a bond application, which will give you that breakdown that Chuck's talking about, and then they're also going to send it to Chuck so that he can review it. So you can probably do those things contiguous, even though it's probably not the way that it's supposed to happen.
It actually has to come to the board for an official vote.
Right, but.
Yeah, all that information and Chuck, if everybody's on the same page, then it'll be on your next agenda to hear Chuck's recommendation and take action on it.
Right. So that's really all you need to do, is get them to do their job, give it to Chuck. You get the same information, give it to your insurance broker that's handling the bond, and as soon as we approve it, at the next meeting, you should be able to move forward. I mean, there's no issues with the project. Everything is fine. It's just a matter of finishing that little bit of engineering, so. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Comments in the back.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, you're going to have to come forward and identify yourself.
It's really just a question, and it's small. My name is William Warner. I'm a newer resident.
Yeah, you need to come up. It's on TV, so you.
My name is William Warner. I'm one of the newer residents to Oakwood. We've only been here a couple of years. My questions are more based around, you know, you guys were talking about how everybody's seen these plans and everything 100 times. We haven't. How do we access them?
They're all actually the website, the town website. They've done a great job in making all of this stuff accessible.
It's all public information.
Yes. If you go to projects under review, it's right there. Pine Wood Estates, second one.
Pine Wood Estates, okay.
Very easy to see.
So that way, we can kind of catch up on the.
I don't know if you have the history of the project, but that road was supposed to continue over to Camille Drive, and the people at Camille Drive dropped the ball and didn't get to the other end, and that's where Mrs. Shoretty ended up kind of picking up the pieces to wrap this up. So she's doing everything she can to make sure it's done so that you can get your town road approved and then go forward from there.
And we've heard a few stories, but that's about the extent of it, right? So, and I just figured.
There's nothing more to that than the other guy fails.
25th of July, when all this comes back here, we'd like to kind of catch up on that, so that's why.
Yeah, but take a look at it. All the data is there, and Ian does a great job in keeping it updated.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And there's more in the office if you need more.
You guys all set? Again, I apologize. We do the best we can, and we understand the stress that you're going through, and we appreciate it. Yeah.
So we've got contact with the engineers and not been making phone calls for two months.
I understand. Any other questions?
I'll sit.
Yeah, yeah, just as soon as you get that stuff, if you can forward it to Chuck so that we can get the review going, because we don't want to hold these people up again.
I will be getting on to the civil engineer first thing tomorrow. I do understand the significance of this.
Yeah.
I will be contacting you as soon as I get everything.
Yeah.
You know, staff engineer did the plan, so.
Right. But as soon as -- I mean, like I said, the earlier the better, so that it gives her time to get everything to the insurance broker and Chuck, chance to review it. So I know some of that stuff is going to take some time for Chuck to review because it is old. Okay?
Definitely, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I want to thank you, commissioners.
Yeah.
Sure.
A and R, that next item is an A and R plan for TPC Homes. Sorry. Did I say it right or wrong?
I think you did. Did you hear that?
Sure. Why don't you come up and explain what you're trying to do?
My name is Scott Hemming, TPC Homes, and we just have a land, piece of land that's 2.4 acres. Just want to split it down the middle and make two lots.
Okay. Ian?
It meets all the requirements.
Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding the A and R plan for -- what's the address?
This is Brookside.
Brookside. Anyone? Did everybody see it already?
Yeah.
I assume? Yeah, I mean, they're pretty straightforward. It's a nice straight line and everything. This is easy to -- you don't get those all the time, do we?
No, this is good.
If nobody has any questions, I'll look for a motion to endorse the A and R for TPC Homes.
And authorize staff to sign on your behalf.
And authorize staff to sign and. I like that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the A -- or endorse the A and R and request staff to. to sign on our behalf. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Piece of cake, thank you.
All right, now what's the next process to pick up the paperwork and?
It'll be, when will it be ready, Ann?
It'll be ready by 1 o'clock tomorrow.
Oh, excellent.
But you gotta be here before Friday because I'm not here Friday.
Okay, I'll be here.
You'll be here. We'll be ready. You're welcome.
You're welcome. 64 Worcester Road, United Medical Waste.
This is a placeholder. They are very, very close, but again, Mass DOT continues to, I don't wanna say, you know, it's vacation time, so let's just say it's been difficult getting the response that's needed. I've spoken to the applicant, Dave Ryan, I gave him the option because he really wants to get going, because this is, you know, with the interest rates going up, he's financially concerned. And I told him, well, he could petition the board to move forward, but any modifications would require him to go through this process again. And he, I think wisely opted to keep it on as a placeholder, and we're hoping for next month.
Okay. Did you have any conversations with him, Chuck, as far as DOT goes, or?
I did, I talked to DOT two months ago? Three months ago? Just about. And they were, they were still going back and forth on the sidewalk at that point, and now I believe that they're going back and forth on the swale. And I told the applicant, I said, hey, I'd be happy to do a, you know, a video meeting with DOT. Ann said she would join it as well. So, you know, staff is doing what they can to try and move this along, but for some reason, there seems to be a disconnect between DOT and the design engineer.
Okay.
The applicant actually had mentioned to me that he might contact his state representative because he feels like they're stuck.
Yeah, and he should.
Yeah, and he should, that's what I said, too.
Mhm. Okay, so let's continue to the next meeting.
Yes.
Do you need a motion for that, or no? No. Okay, site plan endorsement, 137 East Main Street for Noria Energy Corp.
They have complied with all the conditions of approval, and staff would recommend that you authorize endorsement.
Okay. There were no other changes after the last meeting? We were good?
No. No, they wanted, I think the reason why the board couldn't take action last time is you didn't have enough voting members who sat on the original part of the case.
Okay. So I need a motion to, where am I?
Approve the site plan and.
Approve site plan, site plan for 137 East Main Street.
And instruct staff to sign on your behalf.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So we have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion regarding 137 East Main? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Here is the draft decision for the signage for the same site. And, I'm gonna go through that. So you're familiar with the format, the background, the procedural, all the exhibits that were submitted, and a notification in the decision that, showing that the special permit and the site plan were heard at the same time. That's why the, that exhibit list is so long. So your first set of findings, F1 through F6, go through what was discussed at the meeting, and that there, the applicant did not submit a formal list of waivers, but based on the material received, the following waivers would be required. Additional signage for the car wash, the additional signage for the canopy, and the additional signage for the multiple product dispensers, which we know is gas pumps, but in the future, that might be something other than gas. So that's what their terminology is. Under findings, F7 through F, maybe it's just good old F7, through F10 outlines, you know, what's proposed. I could go over this in detail if you like. The total number of allowable signs exceeded by seven. The board notes that the canopy signage is not considered secondary signage. This is based on the last decision you made on this site. So this, this is a rehashing of what we had done before with the same concept so that there's a clear outline as to what exactly is being granted. Again, the signage on the canopy is considered, not considered secondary signage, based on the fact that it's a unique environment. So the multiple product dispensers, this is one that you didn't talk about specifically. That's if you're standing at the pump, and there's somebody on the other side of the island, there is a logo facing both of you. So you've got signage on the building, signage on the canopy, signage on the freestanding signs, but you also have the logo on the pumps themselves, which you did not discuss specifically. The freestanding signs, no significant changes being made to them that would require additional relief, and no public input, written or verbal, was received during the hearing. And then you get into the waivers, of which there would, there are three. So, where do you wanna go with it? It's a lot of moving parts.
Might as well start at the beginning.
So do you wanna do findings first, or do you wanna jump?
It's gonna be easier if we just start at the beginning and go through the findings. So the first ones are 1 through 6 or something, 1 through?
1 through 6.
So they're just findings of fact, so we need a motion to, to accept the exhibits submitted.
I'll make the motion to accept as submitted.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the specific findings are F7. And F7 actually is just cataloging what the application is seeking for the permit. And so it's F7 through F10 are your specific findings. Any questions on any of those particular findings?
No, I think we've been through them enough.
Yeah.
We almost need to make them, we need to address it in the signed bylaws so that we don't go through all of this stuff because it's just, it's too difficult.
Yeah.
And this is a specific use, then it's, I mean, most of this stuff is all standard. We should be able to address it in the bylaw rather, or in the regulation rather than, right, I mean.
I'm an advocate for updating the bylaws.
Well, I understand.
We need it.
Okay. So we need a motion for findings, F7 through F10.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second for F7 through F10. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, your first waiver, which is for the car wash, signage allowed on walls facing streets or parking lot, a maximum of two signs allowed, not to exceed 24 square feet. The proposed car wash sign is located on a second building on the site. The zoning bylaw addresses multiple businesses in one structure, and is silent where multiple structures are present on one site. The car wash is not a standalone business, but rather accessory to the primary use, which is the gas station. So if you feel that's a very unique set of circumstances, and that signage would be of benefit to the public, then you would grant the waiver.
We would not grant the waiver?
Make your part.
If we found it offensive to the public, we would not grant the waiver?
Well, if the signage, if you feel the signage is helpful to direct the public to the different uses on the site.
I misunderstood what you said, I'm sorry. Okay. So I need a motion to either grant or deny this waiver for the signs on the car wash for the gas station.
Make the motion to grant the waiver.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion regarding the waiver specifically? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Waiver number two, canopy signage, number of secondary signs and allowable square footage. The canopy currently has two logos, and the face is wrapped with branding colors of the existing gas station, which is also considered signage, which results in a total of six existing signs. The signage for the canopy is not considered secondary signage as defined by the bylaw. However, the board recognizes the need for special consideration of the canopy signage, given the site location, proposed uses on the site, and the orientation of the canopy of the intersection of East Main Street and Worcester Road. And that's, that's based on what you did the last time.
Right. Same routine for waiver two?
Yes.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to grant waiver number two for the canopy signage. Is there any other discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last waiver talks about the multiple product dispensers, the signage that's gonna go on the fuel pumps, and they're two sided. So there're gonna be a total of 12 logos on those.
Yeah.
You didn't talk about the last time, so I've got nothing to base that on.
Yeah, and it's something that kinda came up in the one across the street at Burger King, where you had those boards that we had to talk about. So it makes sense to put it in the decision, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And based on the usage, the purpose of the property, it makes sense to.
Mhm.
Yeah. All the other gas stations do the same thing, right?
Yeah. Again, looking for a motion to either grant or deny waiver three.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And here's your decision. The draft decision, that first condition calls out exactly what you're approving. And then we get into the fact that the decision has to be, you know, it has to be filed with the registry. If they make any changes, they wanna add additional signage, they'll have to come back here. The, let's see, oh, the illumination from any signage approved on this decision shall be shaded, shielded, directed, and maintained at a sufficiently low intensity and brightness. This is all coming from the regulations and from what was discussed in the prior hearing. Prior to the start of permitting, the plan set, actually, yeah, the plan set's gonna need to be revised to show what's been approved. You may not need to or want to do numbers nine or 10 because you've just approved the site plan. I think the special permit decision stands on its own so that you wouldn't require them to go back and bring in another plan set, revise the sheet, or you can have them revise the sheet and just give me that one sheet, and I'll add it to the set I've got. So it's up to you on how you wanna proceed.
Well, it makes sense for them just to upgrade the one, update the one. I mean, we don't need to go through the whole thing, so.
Okay, I can coordinate with the project team. It would just be to put the special permit conditions on one of the sheets, and then they can just ship that to me, and I can print it and add it to the plan set. The revised plan, the revised plan set must be, you know, on file before applying for signed permits from the building department, and they're responsible for making sure that all their necessary permits are applied for. A lot of people come to these meetings and they think, oh, yeah, the board approved it, but they, you still need a signed permit from the building department.
Funny how that works.
And then the last one would be the record of vote. So those are the conditions. So your first step would be to either approve or deny with the conditions.
I make a motion to approve the conditions.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And then the record of vote. Authorizing me to sign.
A motion.
I make the motion for Ann to sign.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to direct Ann to sign the decision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ann, thank you for doing another great job on that. It makes life so easy.
It was maybe easier.
For us, not for you, but for us.
It was easier because we'd already done it before.
Yeah.
So that was helpful.
Where are we now?
Bates Point Road.
Okay. 70 Bates Point Road, special permit.
We have, since the last meeting, received additional information, including a revised plan set. And the engineering review, which we received today, there was some mix-up as to who received what. Chuck didn't actually get the plan set until today. He hadn't been included on the email chain for the revised plan set, which we received last Friday, but he did get his engineering review in on time.
I got it just in time, Chuck. I'm Leslie Wilson from H S and T Group. I'm the civil engineer that's worked on this project. This is Glenn Krawski. He's the environmental consultant on the project. We're here representing Dr. Shakely and his, his home on the lake. We are here tonight asking for a special permit because we are over the allowed 40% impervious area on the site. We're at about 58.4% that's impervious. We did everything we could to try to make it, we made the house smaller, we made the driveway smaller, we used pervious pavers for the walkways. We used, we got a landscape architect to come in and put in plants that would catch the water before it would go down into the lake. We, we pretty much did, yeah, we, we did. Yep, a cul-de-sac. We did a cul-de-sac that will infiltrate all of the impervious area on site. We sized it so that all of the impervious area could go into it. One of Chuck's last comments that we got today was asking how the gutters were going to go into the cul-de-sac system. All of the gutters of the house will be going into the cul-de-sac system. We do not have the architectural plans at this point, so I can't tell you exactly how they're going to get there, but they will get there. They will get into the system.
Okay. And Chuck's other comment about the number and location of the, wasn't it two sections to that comment?
Right, Ann just had it up. So the, the information about the infiltration system, so you had it, you had just kind of like a basic detail, but didn't call out like how many chambers, the elevation.
I did, correct. On the, it's a cul-de-sac, the 330, the big one. In the drainage calculations, the elevations are shown. They are not shown on the plans, but the, I do have my notes from when I was working on it. We did not, we did do stormwater testing out there, groundwater test. We did not, we did do stormwater testing out there, groundwater testing. We did not find any groundwater. So the bottom of the stone is at 500, and then it goes up to 504, which is the driveway elevation.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think...
Leslie, if I can...
So you're 12 feet above the water, basically.
The calculations are fine, everything. It's just not, there's no information about the infiltration system on the plans, other than they say they're cul-de-sac.
We can add those elevations on to that detail. That's not an issue at all.
Okay.
Is the, is the proper size shown on the plan?
It just says cul-de-sac 330.
Oh, it doesn't say like how many or...
No, we have the, they were, we submitted the drainage calculations.
Right, but it doesn't say...
It's not on the plan.
...Ann, what you're proposing. It just says cul-de-sac system.
Can you show us the plan, Ann?
Do you know which sheet?
So we can see where our deficiency is?
So it's in the front yard and next to the driveway.
Right, see where it says Base Point Road, right straight above that.
Maybe in the next one down, Ann.
Yeah, so...
Yep, right there, yep. That's the cul-de-sac system. That's where the gutters will connect into.
But there's no dimensions or elevations on the plan?
Correct.
There are on the detailed sheet. There are, there's no elevations, but there are dimensions on the detailed sheet.
Ann?
Next one.
This one?
Nope, nope.
No, next one.
It might be this one.
Yeah, I've been having trouble with some of the PDFs you've sent. This...
Next one.
Next one. Next one, all the way to the left.
Left.
Yep, all the way to the left. So that's, that shows the dimensions of the overall size of the system. And that's also in the drainage calculation report that we submitted.
Right, so you just need to add how many chambers, the elevations, that information on to the plan set.
To that detail. Okay, that's not a problem.
Not on that detail, on the first sheet, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Either, either one.
Okay.
So that it's like part of the plan set.
This one probably makes more sense. I would, I mean, the elevations would make more sense.
Sure, and you should also add the spacing in between the chambers.
Yeah, that's what probably, we can add that on there.
Okay.
And that, did you confirm that that size meets the requirement for the stormwater, for the infiltration?
Calculations, the calculations are correct.
Okay, all right.
May I have a question?
No. I'm just kidding. You can come on.
I'm Hedy O'Shakely. I'm the owner of the property. I have been a resident. I bought this property 10 years ago and it was in the plan to make it my home. I fell in love with the view and I made it a home and I even selected where I'm going to practice based on that, in love with the view. I couldn't afford to build the house when I bought it, so I've been, it's been in the making for a while and I have been commuting from Shrewsbury all the way down to Putnam, so it's an hour commute, and in the winter you can imagine how difficult that is. So I appreciate that we've been here for two years in front of multiple community, extremely scrutinized. The plan has been changed and Leslie's been doing wonderful work. We went through the zoning board, we went through for siding setbacks, and the house has shrunk and shrunk, and now we really made it to the bare minimum. It's a tight lot. It's a...
It's a difficult spot, and I understand what you've been through.
It's 50 feet wide.
Yeah.
It's 169 feet deep. The, you know, anyone will say, why you want to build a house and live in this tight lot? But you look, one look at the sunset and you see the view and you go in love.
Yeah.
So I wanted, I really wanted to make it a home rather than just a summer home in a bungalow. All the houses on the street has been already built, so this is the very last bungalow that's there. And we really have been done, and Leslie, have been intense amount of engineering went into this. We've been intensely, I don't want to go through all the alboriot two days and just only all the details.
Yeah.
But this infiltration system, well, first of all, we shrunk the house to the bare minimum.
Mm-hmm.
We wanted to have handicap accessible inside because I wanted it to be my retirement home and, you know, my, right now, my dad uses a wheelchair. I have visitor friends come with a wheel.
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to build it with handicap, and so it has to, the architect told me, you need that much space. The hallway cannot be tight. You cannot have tight corners. So if you're not going to get that, and I don't want to give up that spot, so I've been fighting.
Okay.
So, you know, engineers came up with intense plan to absorb all the water. This is not going to be a cheap build. You can bet your life on it, so it's going to be the highest, the most sophisticated engineering we're going to do. I don't want any water to, you know, infiltrate the basement or to my neighbors, so we hired Doug Labelle, who's one of the best builder in town, and he has been, done amazing jobs. And all what I say, it's been two years and Doug cannot even get me on his books without the architectural plan. An architect told me he cannot start doing the architect until he know where he's going to do the house. So I really appreciate your, you know, your look into this and if you can expedite it and get...
Okay.
This is the very last stop in the process.
I've been following it, so I know all about it, yeah.
And just last weekend, I have, my neighbor was having all his grandkids playing and stuff, and we have a retaining wall, and if you look at it, it's worse than the pizza tower, the pizza tower.
Yes.
It's literally, if you show the, if you pull the picture, it is falling. And I put now hazardous cones around that area, but those kids, two years old, nobody can catch them when their tubes and balls start running within a second, they are in front of it, and I come screaming, please stay away from this one. It will kill someone.
Yeah, well, we, believe me, I understand.
There is some urgency in dealing with this, you know.
We're going to have a very, very nice, brand-new, brand-new wall.
And if there's anything you want, like these notes that you want, you can, we'll be in your office tomorrow, and I'm sure Leslie will stay up all night.
Absolutely.
She looks like she's ready for that.
I, that's what I want to do tonight.
I'm sure.
So...
Glenn, did you have something? I was going to say that we did close confirmation last week. I believe they sent you a brief note on the closing, as they discussed at the meeting.
Okay. Ann, any other comments or...
Until the plan set is revised to show the new information, I would recommend continuing the hearing until your July meeting.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments while they're here? Does Chuck?
I'd just like to say, so the key to the stormwater infiltration is being able to collect the roof runoff and get it into the infiltration system. And some of the renderings that we saw in the beginning, you know, they were, they were flat roofs and things like that, and there can be issues with using traditional gutters with flat roofs, and so it would be helpful to understand more of the architectures to make sure that you can create a gutter system that's going to work.
Chuck, there will be no flat roofs. We have serious issues with the flat roofs, especially in New England. They leak and stuff, and we have intense talk with the engineer, and it will be not a flat roof. We'll try to, we're going to do multiple columns and the traditional infiltration. You know, it will have a clean line, but it's not going to be a flat roof.
Okay.
It's just too much trouble. It's asking for trouble, you know, with the flat roofs. So it will be a traditional.
Okay.
Considering the fact that the, what we're being asked to add to the plan, the elevations and the size, those are, we know they work, the calculations, the design calculations work. We would really love it if we could close the hearing with the condition that we submit those plans with those additional elevations.
You know, a couple of years ago, we probably would have done that. Now, unfortunately, because people haven't lived up to those bargains, we don't do that anymore. So unfortunately, we really can't help you, other than the fact that if...
It can't hurt to ask.
If nobody else has any other questions or problems with the plan, we can probably give you a pretty good assumption that you can move forward and get started and assume that you're going to get your approval at the next meeting based on her staying up all night and doing her job. So I don't know if anybody else has any questions. If you've, I'm assuming everybody's looked at the plans previously before tonight and...
I just had a whole package together to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ann?
Very, very simple changes we can add.
I agree.
Okay.
I think it's best that, because if, if something should happen and the hearing is closed, there would be a big problem for you, more than anybody else.
I understand. I understand.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, you can go forward, assume with your architect that that's, you know, you're going to finish this based on this plan, and providing there aren't any other issues, you'll have your approval at the next meeting.
So is it, is it okay to assume that...
You're still at risk, this is, obviously, so...
I, I think we're close enough that the architect can get going.
Yeah, that, that was my point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I need a motion to continue to the next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Good to see you, Glenn.
What is the date of the next year?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth. July twenty-fifth.
If you get every...
I'm not going to be here.
We probably don't need you, as long as you get everything worked out with Chuck prior.
Okay.
You, just make sure that you touch base with Chuck several times after you've settled on that plan and just make sure that...
I'll touch base with him.
If there's no disagreements, you, you're free to go on vacation on the twenty-fifth.
Okay. That's my one vacation day this summer.
No.
No, absolutely not.
I'll make sure that I...
Like I said, we'll know well before there if there's an issue.
We'll know, yeah.
Okay? You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Glenn.
Public hearing for special permit for seventy Worcester Road. That was...
Sure. Yep.
Is that the one that you're spot? Is that the one that you're spot? No, no, this is Worcester, not Worcester. Hi.
Hi, Mike Scott from Land Design Collaborative and Sandy, and I don't know Sandy's name.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
No, really.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Mike Scott. I'm an engineer at Land Design Collaborative and this is...
Sandra Terrold.
Sandra Terrold.
Hi.
From U-Haul. So we're here on behalf of U-Haul and this is now seventy-four Worcester Road.
Yeah.
So we'll update the plans to reflect that. Just as an update from where we were last time, we revised some, revised the site plans. Received a letter from your engineer, Mr. Eaton, last week or so. There are about five more items to address. Half the items are gone. I didn't receive a revised lighting plan until this afternoon. And we do have a revised site signage package, which we will include, but there's still a few things that the board asked for specifically on the site. I just want to make sure we've, you know, addressed your concern.
Okay.
Which was that entrance driveway, adding a landscape island, sort of comparable to what's on the left, to add it to the right side. So on this sheet, you're seeing the island...
Do you need a different sheet?
No, no, that's the right sheet.
Hold on.
So presently, as you would enter the site, the parking lot to the right is just wide open, and what we're showing is it's removal of a little bit of the island that's sort of there at the, that'd be the west side of the parking lot. And then creation of two islands going to the east.
Mm-hmm.
The reason for that geometry is actually shown at the end of the set, which has to do with the trucks getting to the loading docks that are on the south side of the building. So we've added those two islands. They're comparable in width to the island that would be existing island on the left. They are also shown as being landscaped with low-growing, drought-tolerant, salt-tolerant type plants, so they won't obstruct sightlines, and they should survive the winter. Additionally, we've had quite a bit of landscaping at the entrance along Route 12 and specifically at the sign. So we had originally asked for waivers relative to landscaping within the parking lot, and I'm not going to say this necessarily satisfies the entirety of that section because I don't know quite what you hold, but the proposal is still to leave the majority of the parking area open. And again, if you, the last sheet sort of shows how truck turning would occur. So that was one big change. That was what we talked about with you folks, and that wasn't in Mr. Eaton's comment letter. So I just want to make, or review letter, so I want to make sure that you're satisfied or that we've at least gone in the right direction. And if it's not satisfactory, we'd like to talk about why it is the way it is and what else we might be able to do. But as you can see here, any, this is showing a WB 67, so basically a 53-foot trailer coming into the site. There are loading docks on the back of the site, and what we're showing is trucks right now realistically can't do it without probably pulling up into the main part of the parking lot and then making their way around the building. So what we're doing here is, again, adding those two islands creates some other needs to reshape that entrance. And so what we've done is we've reconfigured the parking lot. We've actually eliminated a number of parking spaces to the right of the site sign or to the south to allow the trucks to move through the site, and then we've added some parking up against the building on, that would be on the western side of the building where U-Haul's offices are going in, and we've added an accessible route, an accessible ramp. And then we have the second opening, if you go to the next sheet. The second opening or the big opening of the island is actually to allow the trucks to go out to the left. We ran the trucks. There's no way a truck this size would be getting out that existing entrance if that island were to go in. I think right now they're just, if, again, the models are conservative. Truck, I've seen truck drivers do things that the model won't reflect, but what we've done is we've created this plan to, you know, exhibit, to show how that truck routing could work on the way out.
Are you going to provide some signage for the trucks so that they, they know that they need to take the other exit out or that sort of thing?
It's not on the plan, but we will do that.
And do you show markings on that pavement to show that it's supposed to be open and nobody's supposed to park there?
So the upper part, northern, plant north, the eastern side in front of the building, you see the long striped aisles. That's for sort of the staging of people to pick up and return equipment, but we could put something in that area to denote no parking or no storage. Yeah, we can do that, too.
Okay, it's moving along. The sign package is the piece I'm waiting on. I know Chuck has, do you have comments that you want to make or we'll just let it march along?
Do you want me to run through what I have at this point or...
Why don't you quick then?
Okay. The dumpsters are shown for the, say, the non-U-Haul businesses.
Yeah, if you go back a few sheets, the overall plan.
But there's, there's no dumpster shown for the, the U-Haul portion of the parcel?
Yeah, keep going. Sorry. Yeah, right there. We will add concrete pad, dumpster pad location on the, would be the south side of U-Haul. There's a, there's an exit door. Yep, they have a loading, a loading dock, and then they have an exit on the south side of the building, about midway up that southern wall. So we'll end up adding a dumpster pad up in that area.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the, the lighting, they're, they're working on updating their lighting plan?
Yeah, so I got it.
You received it today?
I got a plan today, and I'd like to, I didn't introduce it, obviously, just like this lighting, signage plan.
Yeah.
I know, I don't, I've been on the receiving end of that on the board and as a reviewer. But the lighting plan, so was Chuck's letter, was the lighting concern was on the western property, which is the right of way specifically. So I, do we have a plan now that I got today that will eliminate any spillover onto the right of way? But I wouldn't know, and I did speak to DOT today because I was talking to them about a project in Auburn. I asked if they had any kind of policy on spillover, light pollution, whatever, from a private parking lot onto their property, and this was Jeff Gomes, if you know Jeff. He's... He's certainly not their policymaker, but he's not aware of any kind of limitation, they have a reverse, you know, they're concerned about spillover on a private land. So in this case, there's a public sidewalk right there and they actually have Cobra Head fixtures over the sidewalk. So I guess the question is, is it conceivable to get a waiver from that or, given the circumstances, that it's, you know, I mean, we could certainly have further discussion, in my opinion, it would be...
I think the discussion really is across the street, because it's all residential and there's a bunch of houses right there.
Right.
So we wanna make sure that we're not making that situation worse, that's more, more the concern than Route 12, I would think.
Okay, we'll go with the new plan, that, that's easy.
And then the, the waivers for the parking lot landscaping and then the freestanding sign landscaping, I just didn't get any input on that from either Mr. Scott or the board, I guess. So I'm still leaving that in court here.
Gotcha.
And as I was saying...
I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about the landscaping portion of our parking lot regulation, it's kinda difficult for most people to actually meet, so that's probably another one we should probably revisit sometime in the near future, but I, I, I don't, I mean, whatever you do there, as long as it's...
Well, that waiver's still on the board, I mean...
As long as it's not mulching, it's not something that somebody has to maintain, I'm good.
But we're, we are adding those two new islands.
Yeah.
We are showing additional landscaping along the right-of-way, but I guess, I think, if I'm understanding Chuck right, my point was that bulk of the parking lot's still gonna remain open. And as U-Haul mentioned last time, they end up running into, it's not even a snowplow issue with them, it's that the novice drivers run over the curbs and blow the tires up. So they would rather not add a bunch of curbed islands. And then as you can see with the truck now, obviously, we need that area open. I think the fact that it's open now, you know, there's not an issue with trucks, so we don't wanna create that. Now, U-Haul doesn't expect to have anywhere near the number of trucks that Kmart would have in and out of the building, but they still need to have access for a truck or two a week.
Mr. Scott's gonna add information about the existing stormwater management system and...
Is there one?
The record drawings that we have for the shopping plaza have large stormwater detention systems right down at the low end of the site. And as I told Chuck today, U-Haul has a plumber on site, licensed plumber that does the interior work, he contracted with someone to have all the catch basins vectored out, they did some dye tests and they're gonna run a camera through the system tomorrow. So I should have video and all those other documents and we talked about the illicit discharge statement, components of that, I forwarded that to the plumber. He'll do an internal inspection to make sure there are no existing floor drains that are piped into the system. And then as, as I discussed with Chuck today, there will be new floor drains required for the overhead doors, so those, and they're shown to go to the sanitary, so certainly there's no proposed connection of any kind of non-allowed discharge into the stormwater system.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it? That's a little disappointing, Chuck.
Well, we can, we can go through all the comments that have also been addressed.
So, yeah, we were able to address half, so if we can knock the other half off, which this isn't heavy lifting, provided the plumbing reports come back favorable. In which case, if that's not the case, then they'll have some remedial work and we'll have to stipulate that, but...
Okay.
We have plenty of time to get this stuff in.
Yeah, so signs and landscaping will be the board's issue, I'm assuming, is that it, Anne, really?
Those are the big ones, yeah.
Yeah, we did make an estimate of the existing or the pre-existing Kmart signage by virtue of scaling from the street view, so we will provide that in the next round, what we believe was out there versus, and they've revised the entire package to include the garage doors and everything, so we have new numbers, which that, like I said, that's on the stuff I got. I got that Friday, I got the lighting plan today, so, but that will be in the next round and we'll get the waivers on the plan.
I'm assuming U-Haul has many other locations similar to this in scope that would have signs that were similar to what you're doing here?
If you wanna see what one looks like, you can go to...
I did see the plan, I mean, I looked at...
Well, you can see one on Barefoot Road in Northborough that's just off the intersection of 290.
Yeah.
That's a recent, we did that project with them probably four, five years ago and it's pretty consistent, but yeah, you see them everywhere once you start looking.
Right. So just like the gas station before you, if that's a standardized thing that U-Haul does, it's good to see a couple of different versions so that we can document that as part of your waiver package for those signs, 'cause I'm sure you're gonna be in waiver territory, right? So just a comment, you may wanna have a few of those.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No.
Questions, comments, no? See, good to see the place used again.
We'll see you next month, we'll try to get everything in in the next week or two so that you have plenty of time, alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
You'll need to vote to continue.
Oh, yeah.
I'll take the motion to continue, meaning to...
Second. We have a motion in a second to continue to the July 25th meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Watch, Chuck, you really cleared the room out tonight, what happened? Must be your personality. Can't be me, come on.
I don't think I have any updates.
Good.
I, I sent you guys the latest report on Goya, Goya's going really well.
Okay, I had, item B, the odor mitigation update, everybody saw the, the note from them.
Yeah.
But the, I mean, it's 100% better than it has been.
Yeah, it's much, much better.
295 the other day at 6 o'clock in the morning.
Really though, it's really a whole lot better, I think that they're actually moving forward and getting it, but I was, I'm going to forward Anne some pictures from the Route 16 side of their site, which has a fence that's all dilapidated that people have hit and it's kinda knocked down. And the neighbors at Price Chopper and the other plaza are complaining about that fence, so I'm gonna forward those pictures to Anne so that she can forward them to them and say that there's one more thing that they have to kinda take care of, because obviously that's the first thing you see when you get off the ramp there, it's not a great entrance into Webster, so I'll do that right away and we'll get that, put them on record, I mean, just because it's, it's awful, actually. And we all drive by it all the time and nobody notices, so it's, because you're not looking, it's funny, yeah. Site plan compliance review for 1315 Old Worcester Road, I came in and complained to Anne about them doing work without it being witnessed or inspected. And Anne, where are we?
Well, we, I have Chuck's report, I have, Ted's gonna have to issue a letter, because he's the enforcement officer, but Mike handed me an interesting news article tonight that shows that property has sold, so I don't know if that's a sort of a shell game where they're selling it to themselves or another division, I don't know enough about the sale, but Ted will be issuing that letter of enforcement before I leave, so...
Okay.
I don't know where we're at, I don't think any more activity's been going on out there.
No.
So it's been quiet and maybe that was in advance of the sale of the property.
Chuck, did you look at it, at the work that they did at all, or?
I, I have, yes.
Does it look to be compliant or with what the plan was, 'cause I only briefly, I don't remember the plan that well, but it seemed like it was kinda close.
It, it is, yes, you know, it's...
Yeah.
Which plan shows drainage piping here, that's where they had drainage piping, you know, they graded out the stormwater basins and that sort of thing and...
But you didn't inspect it?
It seems to be relatively following the plan.
Yeah, but you didn't inspect any of it?
I, I mean, I did, I looked at the plan and I know what they did and...
After the fact, yes, okay.
So, you know.
Okay.
It's just, the odd thing is that there's, there was so much effort put into the temptation road controls like mid-site and, and none of that is installed.
Right.
Only stuff at the front, so it's just kinda...
Very odd, yeah, not the way you would think you would approach the project.
Well, Chuck and I both took pictures and I'll be happy to post them to the portal so you can see, or just take a drive-by and it's not too hard to notice.
Yeah, okay. Wireless communication facility, Anne?
Yep, the, you had given me the authority to do administrative approval, if the, if the application that comes through the building permit meets the eligible facilities request and this one did, they're just swapping out old for new.
That's on the water tower?
That is 310 Thompson Road. And I'm trying to remember, that's not on Park...
310?
310, okay, so that's down near 300.
Yeah, okay, that's Rory's, or Mrs. Smith's tower, yes, okay.
Yes, it's in that general vicinity.
Yeah, okay.
So I just want to, I had told you that whenever I approve one of these, I would make you aware in case somebody asks.
Okay. Another one? Did you wanna make any of the other, the board aware of what 300 Thompson Road is or, or do we gonna wait till the next meeting?
Yeah, you've got a, you've got a hearing scheduled for 300 Thompson Road that continues to generate a lot of calls to the office and I think it would be prudent not to say anything more than that.
Okay.
Because when you have a discussion item that is not on the agenda, you could be cited for open meeting law violation and that's contentious.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Anyone? Nothing? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go turn off the recording, so if you'll turn off your microphones.